Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us. It is seven o'clock, not eight. And I'll start by calling speeding the order. As usual, to state pledge allegiance and afterwards, I ask you to remain standing for special treatment.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America, land that I love, sent me cypher and I heard through the night with the light of love.
From the mountains.
From the mountains.
To the prairies.
To the prairies.
To the oceans, wide with hope.
God bless America, my home sweet, home sweet home. God bless America, my home.
God bless America, sweet home.
America, my home.
America, my home, sweet home.
Well, that was amazing. Thank you much. Do you have Central Middle School, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. You guys are awesome. That was quite a treat. Thank you. Come back anytime.
Ms. Tiski?
Here.
Mrs. Longren?
Here.
Mrs. Chaken?
Here.
Mr. Cormac?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Merkelgum?
Here.
Mrs. Raj?
Here.
Mrs. Sharino?
Here.
And Mr. Wurz?
Here.
Moving on to the president's report. I'd like to thank you all for coming. It's a huge crowd tonight, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of people here who will give some words out and recognize a lot of people. So we will try to keep it moving quickly. So I have a few updates for tonight. Tonight, we'll be voting on our three-year comprehensive plan. The plan was developed by a committee consisting of teachers, administrators, community members, and board members. I was a part of the committee and saw firsthand how it was developed from the ground up, using expertise and ideas of all participants. I am confident that this is an excellent roadmap for our priorities over the next three years. We also are continuing our learning walks throughout our schools. I believe it is critical to have a firsthand understanding of how our schools function. This enables us to make informed decisions on what is best for our school and our community. It's also really inspiring to see our staff during the workday and their tireless efforts to make sure that all our students succeed. I see it in every school that we've been to, been to roughly half of them, and there's a lot of teachers going the extra mile. We should thank them for that. We're also continuing to focus on next year's budget. We have a number of issues that are impacting this. First is the increase in our salaries and benefits for our teachers. We approved that contract two years ago. We all agreed that this was critical and a needed pay increase to make sure we attract and retain talented staff. We've also seen a decline in the growth of our revenue. In the past, we've seen growth in our property taxes through new developments and an increase in our earned income tax. Both of these have slowed in the past year. I also wanted to note that our special education costs have risen, risen over 10%, and are now over 25 million per year. We continue to pay exorbitant costs for our private cyber school students. We are required by state law to pay an excessive amount of money for these schools even though they do not provide all the services that we provide. That includes the physical infrastructure, busing sports, and a lot more. Our state legislature legislature has failed to act on this, and the extra cost totaled approximately $800,000 per year. Our business office has done an excellent job on managing our budget. We restructured our debt two years ago, and it's saving us almost $6 million a year in interest, interest payments. Due to these actions, our district will be debt-free by 2028, which is an amazing As a board, we need to make sure we are financially sound and not jeopardize our future by using funds dedicated to our facilities for our normal operating costs. Although some districts do this, it results in higher maintenance and replacement costs that can cripple the district in the future. We are also finally addressing our extra-duty responsibility. We call it EDR for short. These stipends are paid to coaches, club sponsors, tutors, and other staff who go above and beyond their regular duties. Unfortunately, these rates have not been updated in 10 years. Despite two rounds of contract negotiations, no agreement was reached, and as a result, these individuals have not seen a raise in a decade. This has made it harder to attract and retain staff for these essential roles, putting our programs and student experiences at risk. Addressing the EDR rate is not only necessary, it is long overdue. While this adjustment carries a financial impact, it is an investment in the well-being and development of our students and the professionals who go above and beyond to serve them. As a board and an administration, we are committed to resolving issues fairly and in alignment with the surrounding districts. It is time we solve this problem. I would also like to announce that we will continue our efforts to provide some relief in our elementary schools during hotter months. We are now doing, we will be doing a trial in both Guth and Diver with portable air-condition units. We have reviewed our old proposal of putting central air through in all our elementary schools, and the costs are just too exorbitant. I do believe that the one unit in our smaller classrooms will make a significant difference during the days where we have excessive heat. Finally, I'm pleased to share that the plans are in full swing to host this year's graduation ceremony right here at home in Helmand Field. This is always a special time for our students, families, and community, and we look forward to a memorable celebration. Thank you again for coming to the board meeting. We always welcome your comments and concerns and your commitment to Penn Ridge. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Wurz. Good evening. March is a busy month filled with many events and dates to commemorate and celebrate. I would first like to thank both the elementary musicians who played for all of us as we entered the building tonight. I'd also like to thank the Central Middle School acapella group who sang "God Bless America." Excellent rendition, very moving. March is Women's History Month, and later this week, we look forward to our annual Women in the Workplace event at the senior high school, which is part of our Career Pathways program. It gives students an in-depth opportunity to meet and collaborate with women in the workplace throughout our region, and it's always a very impactful session. I'm looking forward to attending it as well. Last Friday, let's get caught up. There, there we go. Last Friday was also World Down Syndrome Day. This year's theme for this special day is something Penn Ridge is proud to promote: improve our support systems, emphasizing the need for inclusive support to ensure individuals with Down Syndrome receive the care, education, and opportunities they deserve. I had the great opportunity to read with the students at Bedminster and to get help from a friend of mine, Bryant, who refers to me as my dude, and all the students of Ms. Zouk's class, who all wore their Miss Men's socks that have been wearing. It was a wonderful afternoon. The annual district art show was held yesterday afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And as you can see on these slides, hundreds of pieces are from artists in grades 12 or 12 were on display. It was so impressive to see the work that was created, and we'd like to thank all the students and staff who made this event come to fruition. Also at the start of the month, there was Read Across America Week. Penn Ridge teachers and staff did an amazing job promoting reading and book experiences for our students. As you can see, we tried to capture as many of these experiences as possible, but there are just too many. Great job, Penn Ridge, for celebrating Read Across America Week in a big way, and I'd like to thank Mr. Wurz and Ms. Sharino as well for coming out and helping us read to the kids. Tonight, we also want to tell you about what is becoming an annual tradition at Diver Elementary School. The Diver PTO was selected for the third year in a row, 2022, 2023, and 2024, for the Chevy Back-to-School Program. John Cioka, General Sales Manager of Fred Beetz Chevrolet Dealership in Doylestown, presented the PTO with a check for $1,000. So we greatly appreciate that. At the start of the month was National Social Workers Week, and tonight, we want to celebrate our three incredible social workers, if you could come forward, please, who spend their very busy days supporting our children and families in more than, in more ways than you can imagine. We welcome Joe Werner, Dawn Hoops, and Alicia Landgraf tonight, who want to publicly tell them how grateful we are for all they do for our team and our students at Penn Ridge.
Thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Next up, we will honor and commemorate our best student athletes here with us this evening, and I'm going to ask Mr. Scott Hagan, our athletic director, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Sit tight, relax for a few minutes, because I have a full front and back page of celebrations for our student athletes from this winter. First off, I'd like to have Ella Brown come on down with Coach Rapp. Ella Brown helped lead our Lady Rams basketball team to District One playoffs, and this year not only surpassed the 1,000-point mark, but became the all-time leading scorer in Penn Ridge High School history with 1,233 points. All right. Next, I'd like to have Coach, Coach Coons come up with Liz Watts. Liz Watts became the first female wrestler in school history to be a two-time Suburban One League champion and qualified for the state championship. Liz was our first female wrestler to make it to Hershey. Coach Coons, you can stay, because I'm going to have Danny Metzler and Quinn McBride come on up. Both of these gentlemen made it to the state tournament in Hershey, and Quinn's wearing his medals. He was sixth-place medal winner this year in a very, very tough weight class. Unable to join us tonight was Colby Martinelli. He won his 100th match during the season and continued on with those two gentlemen to Hershey just a few short weeks ago. All right. Next up, I'd like to have Sadie Hogan with Coach Jenna Anselmo, swimming. Sadie qualified for the Swimming State Championships at Bucknell University in both Butterfly and Backstroke. She had her personal best time in the Butterfly while she was out there and came in ninth place in the state of Pennsylvania. Next up is Jackson Warful and Coach Taishan Hopkins. So don't let the broken foot fool you. Jackson broke the school record in the 3,000-meter race and finished third in the state of Pennsylvania at the Winter Championships. And then he went on to the National Championships up in Boston and finished with the fourth-best two-mile race in Pennsylvania this year and 61st in the United States, and then also the 14th-best one-mile race in Pennsylvania, 144th in the state of Pennsylvania, or, excuse me, in the United States. Congrats, Jackson. All right. We're going to bring up our four-by-200-meter relay team that competed both in the states and nationals over the last couple of weeks. They broke the school record in the four-by-200-meter relay. They are Ethan Sarafassi, Chase Marshall, Nick Linder, and Logan Lemaina. They finished in 24th place at Nationals and had the fifth-best time in Pennsylvania this year. All right, Nick, Nick, you can stay. All right, Coach can stay. The four-by-400 relay team that went to the state tournament and also the national championship, Nick Linder, Lucas Klobowski, Isaac Bergen, and Zach Bridgeman competed up, competed up in Boston a few weeks ago. All right, our girls' track team. Two of the athletes for the four-by-two are out playing lacrosse right now, but those are Emma Gall and Gianna Luthy. But we're going to have Jalen Jones and Carly Freer come up with, with Coach Smith and Coach McKenna. They finished in fifth place at the state indoor track championship up at Penn State the last weekend of February. I guess it was first days of March. We're going to add Ashley Landis to this group, and I don't think Kagan Smith's here tonight, but these girls were fourth place in the state of Pennsylvania in the four-by-400-meter race at the state championships. During the season, they broke the school record and also were named honorable mention All-State in Pennsylvania. And some other news and notes from the athletic department. Our boys' basketball team, our boys' swimming and diving team, both won their sportsmanship award for their division. We have three athletes, Gavin Mahoney, Liam Smith, and Ashley Wilms, that went to the bowling regional tournament in Lancaster and did a fantastic job. Our freshman boys' basketball team completed their season with an undefeated record. It was the first time in over 25 years at Penn Ridge that had been done. Our cheer team went to the UCA Nationals down in Orlando in February. They did a great job this whole season and are ready to come back better than ever in '25, '26. Our 400-meter freestyle swimming relay of Ethan Whitehurst, Mathias Schwartz, Tim Hung, and Mike Tim broke the school records during the season. And lastly, I know it's not a winter sport, but as of right now, the first-ever girls' flag football team game is being played at Palisades High School tonight. So hope it's a great winter and we'll come back great soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Congratulations to all of our athletes. What will be the next best way to save lives on our roads? These students, these next students have some incredible ideas and were chosen to represent our region and share their ideas with state leaders at the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. All five students, if you could come forward, please, as part of our school-gifted enrichment program, were chosen by PennDOT to present their innovative ideas for future consideration. Ethan Lugembuehl, Ben Cancer, Chloe Benner, Shane Rowand, Rowand, and Aubrey Schultz had the challenge of developing a cost-effective, innovative solution to help PennDOT increase awareness for seatbelt safety and change driver behavior to improve roadway safety. PennDOT leaders said their strategic thinking abilities to solve real-world transportation challenges were inspiring. These students also plan to utilize our gifted program's entrepreneurship incubator to move them forward. So thank you very much. Our robotics team, if please come forward. The students in our high school robotics team continue to excel, impress, and inspire the Mid-Atlantic region for both their excellence and their care for others. Last week, the robo-rams once again finished in the top five overall, which is impressive for this rookie squad, but it was their selfless care of others that really helped them stand out, and we are very proud of them all. This team is a wonderful hybrid of high school gifted and enrichment students, as well as high school students passionate about coding, CAD, and STEM, as well as several students from the mechatronics and manufacturing programs at the Upper Bucks County Tech School. It was only about two months ago when they built their first robot, but officials asked them to help two other rookie teams build their new robots from scratch on the first night of the weekend-long competition. Without the help of our students, these other teams would not have been able to compete. For this dedication, they earned a Rookie All-Star Award and have earned a possible spot, excuse me, in the district championships next month at Lehigh University. So congratulations. Keeping up with our celebration of STEM and innovation, we'd like to congratulate these Grass and Guth Elementary School students, if you could please come forward. After qualifying last week, these teams have earned their way forward to the Bucks County STEM Challenge. This year's STEM Challenge asks students to develop a prototype focusing on industry, innovation, and infrastructure by designing a prototype that addresses a real-world problem related to infrastructure, transportation, and urban development. The goal is to inspire students to consider how cities, roads, bridges, and systems can be built or improved to be more efficient, sustainable, and accessible. So from Grass, we have fifth graders Mohil Mongolia, Havish Bekeria, and Rehan Umar, who developed a safe road infrastructure prototype integrated with an energy-generating system utilizing pressure plates in roads and sidewalks. And from Guth, we have two teams. Their fourth-grade team includes Kelly Fay Merkel, Hayden Mchanka, sorry if I mispronounced that, Wesley Olson, and Solomon Rayor Hunter, who created a design that helps make bridges safer by using solar-powered heaters to prevent ice from forming, making them dangerous. And the fifth-grade team from Guth includes Hazel Pollitt, Madeline Smith, Tilly Strunk, and Renee Yerger. Their design named F E R, Fire Eliminating Robot, is a drone that detects and puts out forest fires at the earliest sign of trouble. So congratulations to all of our students. Earlier this year, Naamin Radidya and Rehan Umar approached Ms. Plord, their principal at Grass Elementary School, and asked them to play cricket during recess and teach their classmates how to play the game. They wrote a proposal about cricket and met with Ms. Plord and me to present their ideas. With approval granted, the boys worked with their principal to purchase the proper materials and equipment. So now, the group of friends at Grass Elementary can we see playing cricket. I still need to learn the rules myself, but I hope I try. I'll be over soon. But we congratulate and commend these students for their passion together with the Percoccy Borough Police Department. Guth Elementary hosted its first-ever Chief-for-a-Day event with our students. The students received entry tickets by engaging in good deeds in school and the community and were placed into a drawing, which resulted in three chiefs and 20 sergeants, sergeants being chosen as winners for this year's event. This year's chiefs for a day in Percoccy are Zolma Mihas, Zaria Barrett, and Cilio Serrano. In the morning, they attended a swearing-in ceremony at Percoccy Borough Hall and were sworn in by Mayor Holabach. Following the ceremony, the family members received a police escort with lights and sirens as they drove to school and were greeted by fellow classmates who came out with extra enthusiasm to support this year's winners. To wrap up the day, officers attended two pizza-party-like sessions with chiefs and sergeants to allow time for students to ask questions and get to know the officers who help keep them safe daily. We are joined tonight by the three students, their parents, Percoccy Borough Police Chief Offshore, and I'm not sure if the mayor's here. Okay, but here they are. So congratulations. This evening, we are also joined by a special family member and a second-grade student from West Rock Hill Elementary School, who is learning about the value of helping others very, very early in life. Chloe Arnold and her grandmother, Dory, have started a special project to help pet owners who may not have the financial means to support their pets. Together, Dory and Chloe carefully pick out rocks that are turned into art after they hand-paint each one and then coat them to protect the paint. Dory says that her grandchildren, quote, "want for nothing," so we want them to understand the value of giving back to others. The rocks then go into businesses in a region where cash The rocks then go into businesses in a region where cash donations are requested for the rocks. Together, they have raised hundreds of dollars and continue to help families with their vet bills or by just buying food and supplies to care for their pets. Please help me welcome and celebrate Chloe, Dory. As you may know, March is our music in our schools month, and we have never celebrated all our excellent music teachers together just for the incredible teaching and direction they provide our students every day. Well, this is about to change tonight. We invited all of our music teachers, as well as many of the students they teach, to join us to receive some well-deserved accolades. From lessons to concerts, dozens of extra hours, and your yes-and-can-do mentality, anytime you're asked to fill our halls with melodies and joy, we want the public to thank you so much for everything you do for Penridge.
You're good at music!
Everybody hear the music, this is why you stay? Just squeeze. Just squeeze together. Just squeeze together, I'm saying. That's it. I say squeeze together. All right. Take a few, hopefully you get close to it. There you go, ready? Okay, there we go. Okay, case of play, I'll take a few. Ready, one, two, three. Good job. Thank you for everything you do. We are good.
So for all of our students and families, you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting, but you can also leave. That concludes my very lengthy superintendent's report this evening, but as you can see, we're very proud of our Y. Our Y here is our students, so thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, moving right along, one thing I wanted to add was it does, you can see the joy that the arts and sports brings to our kids and how critical it is to be part of the school. The music, the arts, all and the sports, and that was celebrated tonight. It was amazing. You can see all the smiles on those kids' faces, so it's something that I think we do a very good job on. So moving along to the student liaison report.
Perfect, thank you. As was stated earlier, March is a very busy month throughout our entire district and especially here at the high school. So starting off with some important information to note, on Wednesday, March 26th, so coming up this Wednesday, is another Career Artifact Day. And without, all students in grades nine through 11th are expected to report to school at 7:15 to complete assignments on SMART features, just to commit some graduation requirements and to finish some of those. The end of quarter three is rapidly approaching, around the corner on Monday, March 31st. And then, an important change to note is then, starting after that, in quarter four, students will be required to show their ID upon entry into the school, and they can use their school-issued physical ID, or they can download the Five Star application, which has a digital ID with a picture on it. This is a change as we've never really seen it before here in the district, so it's an important change to note for all of our students. With that, kind of changing gears, the junior prom is also rapidly approaching, and it is scheduled for Friday, April 11th at Lehigh University, excuse me. Tickets are currently on sale, and students can see the Class of 2026 newsletter and look on the Class of 2026 Canvas page for any more information relating to that. Spray sports are in full swing, and as we've seen, recognition from all of our athletics from Mr. Hagan. An additional congratulations to all of our students recognized today and all of our sports teams in general, who worked so hard for all of their accomplishments. And everyone can check out the athletic page for any upcoming sporting events here at the high school or in the middle schools. Our spring craft fair at the high school is scheduled for Saturday, March 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's just a nice community event to see and showcase some of the crafts available in our community. And then, an important event really in our high school, one of the most community events that we host here at the high school is our mini-thon. So the mini-thon Luminary Event Honored Loved Ones That Have Passed Due to Cancer is scheduled for Friday, April 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the high school. And then, the main event, in which all proceeds go towards childhood cancer funding and research, is scheduled for Saturday, April 5th, from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. in both of our gyms. And Community Hour is scheduled for 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we strongly encourage everyone to attend if possible. The main event is $35, but Community Hour, which as I said is from 2:00 to 5:00, is free for everyone. So if you have a couple of free hours on that Saturday, we really encourage everyone to go and support the really important cause of childhood cancer funding and research. With that, we switch over to our musical, music department, and our annual BCNBA performances have occurred this past month in chorus, band, and orchestra. And congratulations to all of our musicians who qualified for these performances. It's a big accomplishment for these musicians. And then, we have our indoor percussion, received second place out of 17 in their last competition, and they have championships scheduled for April 5th. And we're really rooting towards them as they're doing incredibly well this year. And our indoor color guard also has championships coming up on April 12th and 13th, and this is both our novice and A color guards. And with both our color guard and indoor percussion, our Family and Friends Show is scheduled for Wednesday, April 16th, and is completely free to the community members who might want to come out and see what our music department has been working on. And then, lastly, our spring musical of Les Misérables is scheduled for Thursday, April 24th through Sunday, April 27th. Tickets are on sale now for $10 each, and we strongly encourage everyone to grab their tickets now as tickets are already half sold out and there will be no ticket selling at the door. All tickets have to be purchased online. And all of our musicians and actors, actresses behind the scenes are working super, super hard, and we hope you're able to come out and see their amazing performance. And lastly, with student council, we've also had a busy month. So we had our combined Region I and J Conference on March 10th, where all the schools in our regions were able to send some delegates to this conference to discuss plans and ideas for the future of our student councils. And from our collaboration with the basketball team during their pink-out game to support breast cancer research, we were able to raise over an additional, excuse me, over an additional $500 to support the cause of pink-out and breast cancer research. And then, lastly, in late of March being Women's History Month, we have our annual Women in the Workforce Series to support our women leaders within the high school. It will include breakfast with our student leaders and then a different conferences with women leaders out in the community. And we have delegates from different fields, including nursing, speech pathology, a U.S. House of Representatives intern, sports management, cybersecurity, sales, and many others. So this is really a great opportunity to showcase our student leaders, our student women leaders, and give them a kind of view into the women leaders out in our community and sort of bring all of our student leaders together and give them an amazing time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. First up is Jonathan Russell.
According to Policy 903, public comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation is limited to three minutes and should be directed to the entire school board following the announcement of your name and municipality. Under this policy, the presiding officer has the authority to warrant or stop a public commenter when violation of this policy occurs. All right, now the floor. We didn't start the talk.
Good evening. First, I want to thank, sorry, Jonathan Russell, Hill Township. First, I want to thank each of you for serving on the board and for your service to the district. You're called upon to make weighty decisions, not that I always agree with everything, but I do want to recognize your service. I'm here to speak on the first read of Policy 235.1, dealing with surveys. I understand that elections have consequences, and this board can count to five just as easily as the last board can, but I'd encourage you to continue to limit the use of surveys in the classroom and not to remove the active parental inclusion component from Policy 235.1. We can certainly debate the use of third-party surveys, like the PAYS survey, which itself takes away close to an hour of valuable classroom instruction time from our students. We can also debate whether or not the questions in these surveys are appropriate. I think we talked about this before, but some of these questions, just to read them, just seem like they would be better served in some other context. Do you feel very close to your parents? Do you share your thoughts and feelings with your parents? How often do your parents tell you they're proud of you? Do you enjoy spending time with your parents? Do people in your family insult and yell at each other? Do you argue about the same things in your family over and over? Do people in your family have serious arguments? It just almost seems like it's a little bit too intrusive into the family dynamic for something to be taking place in a school survey. We also can debate whether our school district even reviews or does anything with the survey information. When this came up two years ago, it was acknowledged that the district doesn't do anything with the information. For example, one question in the PAYS survey asks, "How often do you attend religious services or activities?" It seems like an odd question to be asking people in school, students in school. However, if the PAYS data revealed, as it has, that young people who regularly attend religious services are less likely to engage in problem behaviors, would we really expect this board to work with places of worship in our community in order to encourage more student participation? This begs the question, who gets to decide what select data points are elevated and acted upon, and which ones are ignored or suppressed? We can debate whether some surveys are really just being used to shape behavior by acting as a push-pull in an attempt to manipulate a student's views on different subject matters, including political perspectives and ideologies. But what we can't debate is that, parents, we still expect, as parents, we still expect you to obtain our active consent before you start asking our children questions that aren't even asked in polite company. We can talk all we want about establishing a more inclusive learning environment, but if you fail to obtain our active consent before allowing our children's data to be mined, you're not really being inclusive at all. I would ask you to uphold parental inclusion in the education of our children, keep the policy language in place that ensures that active, not merely passive, consent must be first obtained before a parent's child can be subjected to random surveys about personal beliefs and family behaviors during valuable instructional time. Thank you.
Next up is Kim Beddeline.
Hello, Kim Beddeline, Percasi Borough. I want to comment on the proposed changes to the survey policy. Given the decline in student educational proficiencies and given the limited amount of instructional time at school, it seems counterintuitive to spend a chunk of time having students complete surveys meant for other governmental agencies. The Pennsylvania Youth Survey, known as the PAYS survey, is administered by the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency to students in sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade to, quote, "learn about their behavior, attitudes, and knowledge concerning alcohol, tobacco, other drugs, and violence," end quote. I would add that this survey also asks children to identify specific behaviors and attitudes expressed by their parents and siblings, which seems particularly intrusive. The PAYS survey also introduces students, especially younger students, to things they may not have been aware of previously, such as getting high by sniffing glue or inhaling the contents of an aerosol spray can, feeling so depressed about the future that you consider suicide, or harming yourself by cutting, scraping, or burning your body as a way to relieve difficult feelings, and that's a question directly from the survey. The Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency has the ability to collect data by going out into the community at large, whether by door-knocking, sending questionnaires in the mail, or doing targeted text polls. Let's keep the school day reserved for educational instruction. This next comment is on behalf of someone who could not be here tonight, and it pertains to Consent Calendar Item I Personnel Report and the individual number one on the report. Why is this staff member being put back into the position of house principal when he was previously removed from that position after numerous lawsuits were filed against Penridge in which he was named? Discrimination cases and issues with student interaction on social media in which is alleged that he failed in his duties. Concerns were raised that this person was not completely forthright about an assault in the weight room that injured a student. Has everyone on this board personally reviewed his personnel file? If you vote tonight to put him back in the role of house principal and you do not perform your due diligence by reviewing his personnel file, it will go into the next lawsuit and your errors and omission policy may be void because you ignored the comment now before this vote. Please consider putting this vote on hold until you can review the subject's personnel file. Thank you.
Tom Traugr.
Good evening, Tom Traugr, East Rock Hill Township. Thank you for recognizing the music educators of our district during Music in Our Schools Month. Each of my three children have participated in music programs through a chorus and two of them now through the instrumental program. My wife and I are no stranger to the world of music. We met through the music program in the district where we graduated, and in fact, my wife has her first degree in music performance. Our support for the music and arts is a must as a district. I have recently been attending the North Middle School Jazz Band competitions, and I also attended the Penridge Night of Jazz. The Night of Jazz was such an incredible night that showcased the various levels played by our students across the district from middle school to high school levels. And in fact, North Middle School will be hosting their second annual jazz festival coming up in a few weeks in April. Thank you to our teachers that dedicate their time before, during, and after school hours. Thank you to the board and administration for your continued support of our music and arts programs at Penridge. I'd also like to mention that I reviewed the comprehensive plan, and I'm happy to see the continued focus on career pathways. As a parent of assumed-to-be tech school student, and after listening to the tech school budget presentation at the last committee meeting, as a district, we must continue to invest in these programs. We must continue to find ways to support the learning needs of all of our students. I am also in support of priority number three, culture, climate, and safety. It is important to focus on and plan for the mental health and well-being needs of all of our students. I hope this can be done by adding support services in our schools, educating our students and community on these areas through the use of the recently added evening events that the district has hosted. As quoted in the plan, "We should witness school and classroom cultures and celebrate their uniqueness and foster a sense of belonging for all of our students." And I believe that we've recently witnessed this with our two young boys from Grass Elementary in their endeavors of introducing a game of cricket to their school. The last thing I want for any one of our students is to be told here or feel that any certain space is not for them. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Consent Calendar. I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through I. I need a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Wears, if I may, I'd just like to introduce Chris Bogan, who's part of our Consent Calendar. Chris, if you could please rise for a second. Mr. Bogan currently serves as a facility manager at Siler Elementary School. Prior to that, he was a facility manager at Penridge High School from 2013 to 2021. He was a key member of the grounds maintenance team, ensuring the upkeep and safety of district facilities. Before that, he worked as a second shift supervisor at Penridge High School from 2008 to February 2013, graduate of Sacum High School. And I looked that up today, it's in, it's like upstate New York?
Long Island.
Oh, Long Island, sorry. Geographic challenge tonight. So he's built a strong career in facilities and maintenance management. He also holds a certification as a Pennsylvania Public Pesticide Applicator and CPR and First Aid Certified. So he's being promoted to be our next Assistant Director of Operations. An outstanding individual, and he's joined tonight by his wife, Kelly. So before the board goes, I just wanted to introduce you to her.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes 9-0. Moving on to curriculum.
Moving on to curriculum.
Thank you very much. At our March 3rd Curriculum Committee meeting, we received updates on improvements and opportunities to our middle school math program, including an anticipated plan with sixth-grade accelerated math course. Received summary of the district's comprehensive plan developed by a committee comprised of various stakeholders in our school community. And we have two voting items tonight, an approval of the comprehensive plan and an approval of obsolete books. So, first recommended action, a motion to approve the 2025 comprehensive plan as well as its associated reports, A through C listed below, induction plan, professional development plan, and gifted education plan.
Second.
Second, Ms. Shireno, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? No. Motion passes nine zero.
Excellent. And our second recommended action is a motion to approve the following obsolete books, A through C listed below, from Sellersville Elementary, North Middle School, and the High School. And I so move.
I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Kaufman? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero.
The next Curriculum Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 7.
Moving on to facilities. Mr. Kaufman?
On March 10th, we held our Facilities Committee meeting where we discussed the approval of environmental control systems, the approval of the 2025 summer projects, the approval of the high school STEM room and dust collection system, and the approval of the North Middle School access control. The 2025 summer projects included the removal of an underground heating tank at Bedminster Elementary School, the district support center with site improvements and replacement of the bus engine block heater, power stations and security cameras, replacement of the track at Hellman Stadium, West Rock Hill Elementary School to replace the classroom HVAC pneumatic controls, the exterior door projects at Bedminster, the High School of North, Siler and South, and the dust collector addition, sorry. Can I get a motion for the approval of environmental control system?
Make a motion.
Yep, we can do all of them.
Can I get a motion to approve letters B through E?
Second, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second by Ms. Shireno. Questions or comments, or if you'd like to vote on anything separate?
I just want to make a comment for the robotics for the dust collection system. I'm excited for this and hopeful for collaboration with the tech school to possibly partner up with, you know, even going more hands-on learning for the welding program or even the mechatronics over there. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero.
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 14.
All right. Moving on to finance. Last finance meeting was March 10th, 2025. We'll go through each one, I think, individually on these. First is the approval of the Upper Bucks County Technical School Budget for 2025 and 2026. Just for people's information, it goes through the budget, comes from the tech school in each school district, Quaker Town Palisades and Pen Ridge will vote on it. If two of the schools pass it, then the budget is approved. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Upper Bucks Technical School Budget for 2025, 2026, approved by the JOC. And I got a second for Mr. Kornick. Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank Dr. Rera and his team for all their hard work on this. It was miles above what it was last year. So, thank you for all your hard work, for everything you guys have done with this budget this year.
And since they are out in the audience, could you stand up? I'd like to thank these three who put all this hard work into it. Other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Approval, moving on to the approval of contracts. I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through I. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shireno. And is there any questions or comments on any of these items? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. The last thing on these, approval of a new Student Activity Club, and that is for the motion to approve Student Activity Club of the Model United Nations Club, which is a new club here at Pen Ridge. Any, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second of Mr. Kaufman. Any questions or comments? Always appreciate when they create new clubs and new ideas. If you don't know it, there are tons and tons of different clubs out there for, in the high school. And if you can't find something you're interested in, there's always someone to start a new one. So, it's just another opportunity. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 14. And we will now move on to Personnel.
Good evening. There was no Personnel Committee meeting in March, but we will resume in April. And I do have one of the best parts of the agenda tonight. The first item tonight is approval of Director of Athletics and Activities. I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Henry Hunt as Director of Athletics and Activities at a salary of $130,000 effective July 1st, 2025.
Second.
Ms. Batizki, before we vote, I'd like to just make a few remarks about Mr. Hunt. Okay, thank you. Mr. Henry Hunt, if you could please rise, it'd be great, is currently the Director of Athletics at the Central Bucks School District. He's been there since 2015, and he oversees operations for 50 teams across 26 sports, fostering relationships with staff, parents, and community stakeholders. Mr. Hunt develops and leads the CB West Athletic Leadership Council for student athletes and ensures compliance with all PIAA regulations. Before serving as a Director of Athletics at CB West, Mr. Hunt was Athletic Director at the School of the Future in Philadelphia, where they implemented mobile technology to enhance team administration and parent engagement. With a strong coaching background, Mr. Hunt has mentored student athletes in multiple sports, including varsity volleyball, boys' basketball, and lacrosse. He holds a master's degree from Newman University and a bachelor's degree in kinesiology from Westchester University. He's also a certified athletic administrator through NIAA. He's passionate about leadership development and program growth. Mr. Hunt continues to make a lasting impact on high school athletics. Tonight, he's joined by his wife, Jamie, his daughter, Olivia, and his son, Grayson. So, we're very excited to welcome you to the Pen Ridge School District. I hope this vote goes through, but he has had an outstanding interview, and I just want to welcome you to the Pen Ridge School District. So, thank you.
Any other, we have a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations. Welcome to Pen Ridge.
Congratulations. I'm also happy to make a motion to approve Mr. Abram Hughes as Central Middle School Principal at a salary of $161,000. $161,914 effective July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. If I may, again, Ms. Batizki, I'd like to just give some background to Abe Hughes. Mr. Abe Hughes is an experienced middle and high school administrator dedicated to instructional leadership and supporting students and teachers in reaching their highest potential. Presently, he serves as the High School House Principal at Pen Ridge High School for the 12th grade students. Mr. Hughes oversees the scheduling of approximately 2,300 students, including special education and English language learners, while supervising a diverse team of educators and support staff. As a leader in assessment coordination, Mr. Hughes manages the Keystone Exam testing and ensures compliance with Act 158 graduation requirements, which is not an easy task. Before this role, Mr. Hughes was an Assistant Principal at Indian Valley Middle School in the Sauterston School District. His background in mathematics education, and he previously taught at Sauterston Area High School, where he serves as a mathematics department coordinator, mentoring teachers, and leading curriculum development. He's currently pursuing his doctorate in educational leadership at Delaware Valley University, and he holds a master's in educational leadership from the same institution. So, we're very excited for Mr. Hughes to continue his work as a principal of Central Middle School.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations. We will miss you at the high school. My daughter is in your class, so she's highly overdue.
I was about to ask Mr. Caddy if, I heard that he was the brains behind the operation, so I'm going to make up for losing him, so. No, congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Miller informs me that we can take the next two motions up together if there's no objection to that. Both are memorandums of understanding. So, the first is memorandum of understanding between the Pen Ridge School District and the Pen Ridge Educational Support Association regarding overtime. And the second is memorandum of understanding between the Pen Ridge School District and the Pen Ridge Educational Support Association to eliminate the 90% salary during the 60-day probationary period. So, that would change it to full salary during the 60-day probationary period. So, I make a motion to approve both of those agenda items.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero.
And then we have an approval of tenure recommendation. So, a motion to approve tenure recommendation for Victoria Schmidt.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shireno? Oh, Lee, sorry. Any questions or comments? Is Miss Victoria in the house today? Or watching on television? All right. I just want to congratulate, that's a vote. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Then finally, the next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 14th, 2025.
Moving on to Policy.
Our Policy Committee happened on March 10th. In that meeting, we discussed the Policy Update Plan, talking in particular around ideas for cell phone usage and where that can be handled throughout the district. The result of that meeting is first read of the next two policies. So, they are listed. So, motion to approve first reading of the following policies. Do we want to do it separately? I feel like we're pregnant of doing them separately anyway. So, we'll start with surveys. Motion to approve first reading on Policy 235.1, Surveys.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
I'll just make a comment. I thought we had a really great Policy Committee meeting and a lot of good discussion. I just will not be supporting it tonight to go through. Just my conscience is that I don't believe that third-party surveys have a place in the public school system. But I can't say enough that Ernst and the administration team have faith in what you guys are doing and have trust that if this does go through, it will go through in the most transparent way. So, I just wanted to say, comment on that.
I also, yeah, wanted to comment about requiring opt-ins. To my knowledge, I think we still require opt-ins or consent from parents for photographs of their children. And I think surveys should be along those same lines. You know, they can be viewed as intrusive and asking sensitive information. And I think it's important for explicit consent.
I just want to comment, I missed the last meeting. I'm going to vote to send this through just because it's a first read, but definitely want a little bit more clarity on how clear the opt-in is and when that is, if it's going to be in the beginning of the year. And also, if we can get some follow-up to whether the parents can see the questions for certain surveys ahead of time.
Yes, that was discussed at the Policy Committee. So, it is not going to be opt-in, it's going to go back to opt-out. So, the beginning of the year, I'm going to pull the policy up real quick just so I don't misspeak. At the beginning of the year, the administration will let parents know the third-party surveys that are planned and the timing, I believe, and please correct me if I'm saying this right. Then there will be notification given no less than 10 days prior to the actual administration of the survey also. Anytime from that time to the survey administration, parents can ask for a copy of the survey. We also looked into getting something like the PAYS survey on our website so parents can find it themselves without having to ask for it, which we're still looking into. But they will be notified at the beginning of the year and no less than 10 days prior to the administration of the survey, that the survey is coming and how they can opt out if they would like.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I know we'll have to talk about this next week, but is the opt-out now, just like when you fill out, like my children can take Tyler home?
No. It won't be part of the beginning of the school year questionnaires.
Okay, all right, I misunderstood that. Then I will not be supporting it tonight, but maybe we'll get some clarity next week.
And just to clarify some things around PAYS too. PAYS is completely voluntary, so parents can opt their student out. It is confidential, so it is a little bit different than photographs. It's no way to link the data back to a particular student. Students also are not forced to answer all the questions in the PAYS survey. So, if there's something they don't understand or something they don't feel comfortable answering, they can skip that question if they aren't forced to answer them.
I also wanted to add something. I do think that we were very thorough with the last Policy Committee meeting. And as of right now, pictures for students are opt-out. And in regard to some public comments that we have, parents will always have the say in regards to if they can take, for example, this PAYS survey. It does go out to them in the past, it has. So, they're able to review it. So, by all means, I mean, I definitely think that we should, as parents, know the surveys that are taken and with this opt-out, we're able to look at the surveys. So, that is still there as that safeguard in going through if you have a chance to look at the policy. There are definitely safeguards there, and the parents are, again, able to opt out.
I just want to chime in. So, I think that we had a very constructive dialogue during the committee meeting. You know, there wasn't any real negative pushback either direction. I just want to reiterate my point from before that we had that mental health seminar. I think the assessment that we were asking people and their families about their home life, families who've lost loved ones, I think we disagree with that assessment. Parents that have lost their children, children lost siblings, or they've lost their parents to suicide. We learned during the mental health seminar that children as young as six have contemplated suicide. To be able to get a holistic picture of what our students are experiencing, I think it behooves us to be taking the PAYS survey for what it is and being able to gather that data as a whole picture of what Pen Ridge students are experiencing. I still go back to, we've lost children this year that we should have never lost. You know, my son's a sixth-grade student, and I understand the struggles that these students are experiencing. He lost a classmate this year. And, you know, in the back of my mind, I keep thinking to myself, if we would have had a clearer picture of what these students are experiencing, would we be able to target and be able to give them the appropriate help that they need? And I think that's exactly what PAYS gives the district and gives the state. It allows them to allocate funding to help with these programs for social workers and for different mental health seminars. So, I think it would be short-sighted of us as a district to take PAYS away from our students. So I think it would be short-sighted of us as a district to take PACE away from our students when there is, it's such a crucial time. I mean, we're seeing more and more students who are being influenced by social media and experiencing mental health crises. And we can't get a good picture on it if we bury our head in the sand. So that's why I support bringing PACE surveys back.
I hear what you're saying, Kaufman, and it's hard. That's where I think it's hard for me to wrap my head around, because PACE is an anonymous survey. So it's difficult. I thought that was a pretty good point from one of the public comments, and maybe that's something that we can elaborate after it goes through.
That's the palm card for the child that we lost this year. And if it's enough for us to have-
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. But I think that is a good point that was made earlier. Like, if this goes through, which, you know, it seems like it would, and this is something that we would give to our students, you know, again, it goes down to sixth grade, and I know what you're saying, it goes down to six years old to some people, but it's hard when it's anonymous. I don't know how specifically I could see that it would help in a specific situation. But I think the point that, again, back to the public comment about what we do after we find, after the survey would take place and we gather the data, how are we using that? I thought that was a pretty fair thing to ask, and I know that's something that administration will work on, and I'm sure they'll be, you know, again, transparent with how they will use it. But that, I think, you wouldn't want it to happen for no reason. So you're hoping, and it's hard, I guess, that's where it's hard for me to wrap my head around. It's anonymous, so how is it specifically helping? I always talk about the umbrella part. So is it hurting some but helping others? And what's, that's where it's, you know, introducing some things that maybe some students at a young age haven't been introduced to, and that's something, so that's where I struggle.
And at the seminar, they discussed that misguided thought that just by introducing the topics to the children, that that's gonna somehow bring them into an idea of being able to. And these are from trained psychologists and trained social workers. And if this helps to save one life, I'm all for it. The fact that we have funding allocated to social workers and to psychologists from the state, and it's based on different performance metrics, to be able to have this information to go back to the state to give us more help and more resources, it may not be targeted specifically to one child, but it's targeted to the community as a whole. And that could bring money back to us to be able to pay for the resources, to be able to give these children a future. To be able to protect these students, that's, I mean, it's, that's where it lies. It's being able to give us the opportunity to protect all of our students.
Again, I hear you, and I'm not disagreeing that if it saves one child, I agree with you. However, I, like, we're a local entity. I feel like that's something that I've spoken on my tenure here, like, and we don't always act like it. Like, we go to the, you know, it's like state and then federal. And again, I can't say it enough, I love the team that's being built here with administration, and I feel like we're gonna get there, but that's where, like, in my experience as a professional in a school, you get to, you know those individuals on an individual basis, and it's not such an umbrella, and you're putting all the students underneath it, and that's how you specialize in that. So that's, again, where I get, I feel your passion in your heart with it, and I'm with you on that. I just, again, I just struggle with-
So I just wanna clarify that PACE is not intended to find a particular student with a particular issue. And I think what we've lost, because I remember the conversations as this survey was developed, and I was alarmed at the misunderstanding around PACE in developing this survey. PACE is a community survey. It's not just for the schools. It's conducted in the schools. And it's meant to be a way to help the district work with the community on things that might be impacting our students that the community and parents are not aware of. So parents have a strong relationship with their own child, but they might not be aware of things like Mr. Kaufman talked about, where there are children at young ages with some pretty heavy thoughts, and there might be things that any parent, even with a good relationship, it's helpful information to them to say, like, did you know that there's vaping in the middle school? Like, some parents just might not even know that, and it's meant to be informative to the entire community. As far as things like family dynamics, you know, church and, you know, religious and spiritual support, I don't think anyone would argue that that doesn't contribute to the whole student. And, you know, we wouldn't, as a district, come out and say, force, like, students to start going to church, even if there is a correlation. But that's helpful information for parents, and that's helpful information for the community, and we would share that. And, you know, like, maybe if you're a family that's having a hard time, maybe they would then make that decision to start going to church. We wouldn't make them do that. In the same way, if there's some sort of results happening where students who are struggling with mental health around, you know, how they feel about their sexuality, or also students where there's a strong church, we would never say the church is making them feel this way. You know, we wouldn't stop church activities any more than we would start them as a district. And I think, you know, the idea that this isn't helpful is just an idea. It's been proven to be helpful year after year, every time it's done. And so there's, you know, some scare tactics being put out there around how this is gonna make your child, like, think of something they've never thought of. Maybe? There's a lot of things they're gonna think they never thought of in school too, is even in learning. But when we involve the entire community, it can then be something that we're collectively working on. And that is the purpose of PACE. You can only get it at the school, though. Like, we can't send out flyers for students to fill this out. Like, this is the best place to collect it. It's where you get the strongest data. It's where you get the most complete picture of what's happening with our children in our community.
Before we go any further, this is a first read.
Yes.
And we have plenty of time to discuss this, the next policy meeting.
Yes.
So we seem like we all have lots to say. So we will continue this dialogue at the next meeting if everybody agrees.
So we had a second for a first read. Oh, I just got kicked out. We're done. Okay, here we go.
Other questions and comments?
Sorry, any questions or comments? Thank you. I think I got it. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to three.
Next is, I don't know, keep going. First read. So motion to approve first read of policy three-three-eight, sabbatical leave. Any second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Next policy committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April seventh.
Moving on to student services. Miss Trina?
Thank you. Our last student services committee meeting was on March third. Up for today is the motion to approve the PHS Future Business Leaders of America to attend the state leadership conference in Hershey, Pennsylvania on April sixth, twenty twenty-five, to April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes nine zero.
Our next student service committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, April seventh.
Moving on to the Penrich Area Coordinating Committee.
Yes, that's me again. Thank you. That's a separate document. I got it. The Penrich Area Coordinating Committee met on February twenty-seventh. There were myself, representatives from Silvernail, the Penrich Community Center, and East Rockville. Some things of note is the continued messaging on the just desperate need for volunteers for services provided like EMS and firefighting. These are things that will soon be a cost that needs to be absorbed by our local municipalities. And it seems like they're all really struggling to staff these sort of services, which is harmful to our community. Ambulances are coming from further away, et cetera. Another part to talk about is something I've been working with admin on to communicate better with our administration on new building, especially larger communities that are being proposed, like communities of townhomes and developments in the different municipalities, to help our administration better predict enrollment coming up. So we've worked out a system to communicate that, that I will be communicating back to the PAC when we meet again. So our next meeting is March twenty-seventh this week at seven PM at the Penrich Community Center. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the IU report. The last meeting was March eighteen. I was unable to attend, but I do have a few updates. One of the things I always attach is the items that provided by the IU. I encourage you to read them. They're attached to the agenda. One of them, which I found interesting, was the Grow Your Own Teacher Program, which was started by the IU. It's designed with the teacher shortage in mind, and it was, it allows people who have an emergency certification, I think you call it, to progress to becoming a full-time teacher through the IU, and they're piloting this year with five teachers. So they're finding ways to address the teacher shortage, which I think is admirable. The other one, we did reach out to the IU, as you know, that most, they're heavily involved in special education. And I just wanted to report that as far as they're concerned, there's been no changes in the funding because of the turmoil in the government. They are not anticipating anything short-term, but they're obviously unsure of the future. That's basically where we are now. The next IU board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April fifteenth. Moving on to Upper Bucks Technical School.
Good evening, everyone. First off, it was the first time in my history to see all nine members from each school district approve the Upper Buck Tech School budget. So I think it's a great move that Dr. Herrera and his team have really done a great job in presenting how the school operates and its budget, and makes it work. So I'm tickled pink, and I think we all should be as well. I'm just gonna pull a section out from what we call our career corner. And I think it's really important that you, you know, get to understand that the interface between a tech school and the private sector. We've had Certain Team, McCool's, EMP Industries out of Ivyland, Cuba Pharma out of New Jersey, AH Cornell and Sons, LRM Inc. and Walton Roofing. These are companies that have literally reached out to the tech school to find out what service they can provide for those companies. We had tours of Castle Waste Systems, Allen Myers, and Dual Temp. This is when companies ask us to bring students in to actually view what the company is doing and how they're manufacturing. It's a great opportunity for the students to see how these companies work. We have Shadows, and Shadows is interesting. One store in Flure Electrical and Mechanical. We had two students at Masonry Training Work at Line Works, TNC Partner, Bromley Machine, B&amp;G Manufacturing, and two students at Crumbauer's Lawn and Garden. We had presentations to the students by Castle Systems Inc. and Craft Built and Clover, which I think is excellent. But most of all, we had forty students that are actually working with employers in Bucks County and Upper Bucks. This month, we added six more, Pat Pro's Inc., Indian Valley Bulk, Flure Electrical and Mechanical, two students at L&amp;L Construction, and Fromm Escavating. So all in all, we are looking at our students working in the private sector, earning a salary. And last year, our numbers exceeded a million dollars. So we're looking to see the same thing happen this year. So we're working very hardly, very, very, very hard to make sure that our students find a place in tomorrow's workforce. Thank you. And our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Moving on to old business. Moving on to new business.
I do have an item for new business. This asset everybody bears with me for a four minutes here. I'm calling on the board to draft a resolution over the next month for approval at our April meeting, imploring our elected officials in Washington to stand up on behalf of public school students throughout the country and to defend Department of Education and its mission. It's the sole purpose of school board directors for public schools to defend these institutions and the reason why we were all elected to our individual seats. To sit idly by instead of showing true courage to fight for the future of our children with the mean position that we have and validate our commitment to this institution. The Department of Education exists for a singular and critical purpose, to ensure equal access to education and to promote educational excellence for all students, regardless of background, income level, or ability. It's a responsibility for supporting our nation's most vulnerable children and providing oversight to ensure all students have the opportunity to learn and thrive. Let us not be fooled that programs and funding streams can easily be absorbed into other departments. With numerous cuts to federal institutions, already overburdened departments will be facing additional expectations with reduced or possibly half of their current staff. To be realistic and immeasurable wealth of knowledge, experience, and dedication we lost to crippling nation. To understand the importance of the department, I want to share a couple of key programs. Programs which may not have a direct immediate impact on every family, but for those who do, they're invaluable. Title one, which provides billions of dollars to schools nationally supporting low-income communities. These funds help reduce class sizes, provide additional academic support, and ensure quality education for every child. Within Penrich, this includes funding for four of our schools. Student financial aid. This department provides grants, loans, and work-study opportunities to millions of students. And it includes the free application for federal student aid, which determines eligibility for and regulates loan servicers to ensure fair treatment of borrowers. In the last twenty years, we've seen numerous misdeeds by student loan providers. The Office of Civil Rights, for over the last sixty years, only adopted in a lifetime our parents have equal rights been afforded to individuals based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. At times when local and state agencies fail to act, OCR is the last resort for corrective action. And most importantly, to me, is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, otherwise called IDEA. The law guarantees students with disabilities the right to a free and appropriate public education. Prior to IDEA, children with special needs were routinely denied access to public education, excluded from classrooms, and left without support. Having family members within or who work with this community, I'm not going to arrest as some of the most vulnerable in our community, who oftentimes have no voice of their own or pushed aside. On March eleventh, I watched in disbelief as the newly appointed Secretary of Education, who's a wholly unqualified, couldn't even answer what IDEA is. The study in admissions is not just a reflection of her personal lack of preparedness. It's a stark warning of the consequences we face if unqualified leaderships allowed to dismantle the safeguards that protect our most vulnerable students. The potential elimination of the Department of Education's outright attack on our students and our community. Stripping away federal oversight and funding would have disastrous effects on the children in our community. Without federal protections and resources, many schools across the country would struggle to even meet the most basic educational standards, exacerbating educational inequalities and leaving countless students behind. This abhorrent mismanagement of funding streams would have catastrophic effects on budgets, including here in Penrich. As expenses rise, populations decline, and charter schools continue to siphon taxpayer money unchecked. We cannot allow ignorance to dictate policy. We cannot allow indifference to determine the fate of our children. We must stand together in defense of the Department of Education and the millions of students it serves. And I urge this board to take action, hopefully in conjunction with districts throughout Bucks County, craft a resolution, and send a clear message to representatives in Washington. Defend public education, protect the rights of students with disabilities, preserve funding for underserved schools. We must stand up for the future of our children. So I ask that we craft a resolution to send to our elected officials who represent us in Congress to do everything within their power to protect the Department of Education. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
That's a good ad.
We will discuss this. It's not something we're voting on. And we'll discuss it, and we'll come back in the April meeting. I think it's a good start. Anything else under new business? Public comment? There is no, no one signed up for public comment. An executive session was held March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and one prior to this meeting. The reasons are listed under section nineteen of the agenda, if you care to read it. And that is it for the announcements. And the next meeting is, what is it? April- April twenty eighth.